Hello and welcome to Brockton Community Access's coverage of the September 19th preliminary election here in the city of Champions. We're starting out with Ward 6. There are three candidates running in Ward 6. John Drazinski, Joanne Ziggman, and Jack Lally. Joining me tonight on the panel are Steve Foot, the former Chair of the Democratic City Committee, but announcement, he's now an unenrolled voter, or independent voter. Shayna Barnes, City Councilor-at-Large, who is not running for reelection. Shayna's a Democrat and works for Congressman Stephen Lynch. So we are going to start out the debate tonight first with, in order, we did a drawing, you know, good old scientific drawing out of a baseball hat. And the person that drew first for the open is Jack Lally. Jack, you have a minute to do your opening statement.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Jack Lally. I'm the current City Councilor for Ward 6. I want to start off by thanking everyone who voted for me in the last election in 2015, you know, for your support and for giving me this opportunity. I feel we've made, you know, good progress, and I feel like this term has had a positive impact on not just the ward, but the city of Brockton. And I would ask for your continued support and your vote once again, September 19th and November 7th. Really tried to focus on, you know, all issues that have come across the council's radar and that have happened in the ward, but also infrastructure, public safety, and fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Next up would be Joanne.
Hello, my name is Joanne Ziggman, running for Ward 6 City Council. I have a long background in nonprofit and business development, and I feel like what we need on the City Council and for our ward in particular is some new and creative ideas that maybe are a little bit untraditional. And I feel like I can bring that to, for Ward 6, to the City Council. Thank you, everybody, for hosting me, having me here this evening. Thank you, Mark. I'm excited to be here. Ward 6 has been my home for over 30 years. Grew up in the village, now live closer to the Bookfield School. I went and got a BA in political science and a master's in urban development, so I feel like those things as well I'll be bringing to the City Council. And we'll be talking about the issues this evening. We're probably going to touch on development, which is a big issue for me, making sure residents have a say in that. Money and transparency is a big thing for me, too, and I'm sure we'll cover all of that. Thank you.
Okay, and John Drazinski.
Thank you, Mark, and I'd also like to echo my opponent's thanks for hosting this event. My name is John Drazinski, I'm also running for Ward 6 Councilor. I am a lifelong resident of Ward 6, the Village Section of Ward 6, longtime homeowner. I'm a retired retail store manager. I can put 100% of my free time into this, into this job, and it is a full-time job despite what people think. There's a lot involved with it. I think we need better representation in our ward. I don't believe we've had that the past two years. I think my background, both in volunteerism and in community involvement and my life experience speaks well for other qualifications for this job. So I respectfully ask for your vote September 19th, and hopefully beyond that on the general election on November 7th.
Thank you all for the opening statements, so I'm going to start right, we'll get right to the questions, and the first question will come from Steve Foot.
Okay, as you're all aware, I'm a 60-year resident of Ward 6, and even though you're running for the Ward 6 Council seat, most of your votes are going to be taken on issues that affect the city as a whole. So I do have a couple of questions about Ward 6, but I do have some questions about the city as a whole, and I'm going to start with one of them. Would you vote to ignore federal law and make Brockton a sanctuary city? Why or why not?
Okay, and I'm going to start in the reverse order that I did from the opening statement, so that would be John first.
Okay, sanctuary city, Steve, is, is a federal issue, as far as I'm concerned, and to bring illegal immigrants into the city does not bode well for us. You know, there's, there's the possibility of added crime. I would probably, at this time, vote no for a sanctuary city, and that would be my reasoning. You know, bringing illegal, illegal aliens into the city, some of them maybe have a criminal background, I would probably, I would probably vote no.
Okay, next would be, let's see, I did one, two, three, so I'm going to have Jack do second.
All right. I'm a no on that. The issue came up while I was Councilor, and, you know, I've got, I've gotten many, many calls from Ward 6 residents unanimously opposed to the matter. It's not something the ward wants, and truth be told, it's not something I want either. We risk increased crime. We guarantee the collapse of the city's government through, you know, just a complete withdrawal of funds. Under this president, the school department would lose upwards of $20 million immediately. And if you can save $3 million by shutting down a school, imagine how much money, you know, imagine, imagine how much cutbacks and how much losses we would be hit with. The issue is, you know, it belongs at the federal level, you know, it doesn't belong at this level, but if it does come in front of us, I'm voting no.
Thank you all. Okay, I'm sorry, Joanne, let me, I'm trying to get ahead of myself, I apologize. Go ahead, Joanne.
My vote would be a no, as well. I believe that anything that jeopardizes the financial stability of the city is something that the City Council is responsible for voting no on, and therefore, because as Jack's pointed out, we could lose federal funding, I would vote no on that issue.
Okay. No follow-up required, I think we got that. Everybody is a no. So let's go to Shayna's first question.
Thank you, and thank you, candidates. I do have a question, and I come from a different perspective. Being a current Councilor, I've actually seen the work that Councilor Lally has done in Ward 6, so I wanted to ask, I guess, focusing this question on Mr. Drazinski and Ms. Ziggman?
Ziggman.
Ziggman, I apologize. We're going to have to do that again. So with McKinley Park particularly, so you all, I'm sure, are aware of the funding that Councilor Lally has just secured from the Patriots organization, the craft organization, to add some different apparatus in there, some other state funding, just for the general redevelopment of that particular park. What would you do different to the design of the park? Question, I guess, one. Question 1A is, do you think the design now is an open, friendly, welcoming kind of design for the residents of Ward 6?
Okay, I'm going to start with Joanne.
I think there's a lot more we can do with that park. I grew up in that park, played basketball very, very poorly in that park, but I think that in addition to the new basketball court that's there, I think that, and the PlayStation, I guess you would call it, for the kids, I don't know what you refer to it as, I think what would be excellent would be to look at seeing if we could do a community garden. There's a big plot sort of on the eastern side of that park where a lot of sun shines, so we can do community gardening there, I think is one idea. I know, speaking to residents in the area, that there's an accessibility issue with getting into the park. Both those roads on either side are very busy. I would love to see a blinking light, or a speed bump, or look what we can do to improve access to that park more generally. But also, I would like to, if I get elected, I'd want to reach out and actually talk to folks and see what they want. Basketball's not a sport for everybody. Community gardening isn't something for everybody. So I think we could do a lot of creative things, but I think it's important to get the community involved as well and hear from them.
Okay, John?
Well, as, as we all know, it is a small park, Shayna, and there's a limited amount of things you can put in there, but I drove by there the other day, and as a matter of fact, the basketball court is done, okay, it's not lined yet, but I think things like extra landscaping, maybe a few more trees, maybe shrubs, bushes, increased play area for the kids. As Joanne said, not everyone is a, is a basketball player or basketball fan, so you have to think of the smaller kids also, maybe, maybe extra swings, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Got that one done? So, I'm sorry, I'm doing it again. I circled it, too, and I said, "Jack," I didn't want to mess up. I'm not doing well tonight, Jack. Well, you directed it to the two of them, that's what we're trying to do on...
I did want to also hear what Jack's plan is.
Truth be told, I don't know, I don't know how I could, how I could beat Councilor Lally on that, but I do, I do have to say, the money that we've received for this park and for the playground is all grant money, so, and it's for a very specific item. When the city receives grant money just aimed at a park, we received $400,000 for Walker's Playground before, it was around December, right, Councilor? Yeah. Yeah, so when we received that money, we, you know, we accepted the money, and then there were meetings about what to do with the money, and the, you know, the residents are brought in and things like that. If we get money like that, if we have the opportunity to, you know, really start transforming the look of the park, I'll be out there with letters myself, letting them know. In terms of traffic, we're working on public safety and making sure kids are safe, not just around the park, but in the park as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just make a correction? So my understanding, and I just want to put it on the record as well, to recognize everybody equally, my understanding was that the city did pay $10,000 for the basketball court, and that the state money was about 35 grand, so just a correction on that.
Do you want to respond? Yep.
And in addition to that, the, the Brockton Redevelopment Agency, the B R A, is contributing $50,000 to the playground.
Yes.
I should, I should have clarified, this, I'm talking about, you know, a certain amount of money aimed at, you know, money with no particular construction in mind, just, we have this money, what would you like to see it spent on in this park? The money for the basketball court and the money for the playground were sent to that, they were earmarked for that, and it's specific items.
John, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to add, there's been some talk about fencing in the park, and I think that's a bad idea. It creates the notion that the park is not accessible to everyone. I like Joanne's idea of perhaps, you know, speed bumps around the park, or, or traffic lights, or things like that, but fencing in the park, I don't think should be an option.
Okay.
Thank you.
Going to move on to Steve's next question, and I'll direct it first to Jack, then Joanne, then John.
The council has explored using the Mass Water Resource Association as, agency, rather, as a secondary water source, and found that that's extremely costly. Would you support the mayor's proposal to buy the Aquaria water facility to cure Brockton's water compliance problem?
John first, I mean, Jack first, I'm sorry.
All right. The Aquaria facility provides us a lot of opportunity. The patch of land that it is on that we would be buying has space enough for a second Aquaria plant and all the, you know, all the necessities. We could be looking at, so, you know, right now, it's capable of producing only a couple million gallons, but we're looking at over 10 million gallons if you actually put both of those plants in. The problem is the expense. Buying the plant right now as is is quite a bit of money, and we would be, you know, paying these employees, you know, but that's the, you know, that's the question. It does seem to be a better option than the M W R A. The prices the M W R A quoted us at the City Council meeting were prices for right now. We don't have, we have another 12 years before we would be signing anything with the M W R A. Those prices would, would explode, and that's, that was just the price for piping. We have to pay to go through everybody's yard, pay to go through different towns, pay for the water. The cost would be extraordinary.
So you would favor the mayor's plan?
I would like to see if we can get the price lower, but Aquaria seems to be the better option for right now.
Okay, Joanne?
So I've worked in the water sector for over 10 years now, so I'm quite familiar with desalinization and water supplies to urban areas in general. My concern is that nobody's really taking a long-term view on the security of the water supply in Brockton. There's no question that we need a second source of water. There is not enough water in Silver Lake to sustain the city, especially with the kinds of development that we're talking about, but nobody has actually sat down and compared all the options. So people at the moment are comparing pineapples to steak subs, basically. Nobody's looked specifically at the cost-benefit analysis of the M W A, our M W R A option under the scenario where we would partner with Waymouth and Union Point and try and reduce our costs and split the need to connect into Braintree halfway with them. So if you look at the cost-benefit of that scenario in particular, that all of a sudden looks a lot more favorable than just looking at M W R A in general. So I think we need to do more to look at what the options are across the board and what's best for the city in the long term.
So you would support the mayor's plan?
I would support whatever's most cost-benefit beneficial, and at the moment, I haven't seen a solid case either way.
Okay, John?
Yeah, you know, if the vote, the vote came up today, I would, I would vote no, and, and the reason is that $78 million is a lot of money, and to Joanne's point, I don't think we've explored all our options, either with M and W R A or other companies or other sources. Aquaria has a very poor track record, okay? Jack mentioned they're capable of pumping 10 million gallons of water a day, while the one crisis that we did have here about three years ago, I think, where the East Bridge water main line broke, they were unable to provide a one-day supply to the city. And we ended up buying a very costly bottled water instead, which cost the, the city extra money, so their, their track record leaves something to be desired, and I think you need to know exactly what you're buying before you go out and buy it. As I said, 78 million is a lot, a lot of money, and it's interesting that we're now, we're now buying it at a sale price where it was 88 million a few, a couple of years ago.
Okay, Jack, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, just something I, I wanted to add. We have looked at partnering with Waymouth. Not only have we looked at partnering with Waymouth, we've also looked at bringing in Holbrook. So all three are splitting the cost of the pipe. The concern is still paying for, you know, to cut through people's property and paying for the water itself. In terms of Aquaria, Aquaria's currently able to do closer to 3.5 million. It's 10, upwards of 10, around 14 would be if we added the second plant. This is, you know, that's, the, the price now, 78 million, would be, it would be much higher if we waited until we had to renew the contract. I would like to see a lower price, though.
Okay, Joanne, would you, did you want to add anything?
I'd just like to say that I haven't seen those numbers, and I would love to. I think that's one of my issues generally, is that it's difficult to access information as a resident in Brockton. I'd love to see those numbers, and that I can make my decision as well.
Okay, John?
No comment.
Okay, so we will move on to the next question from Shayna Barnes.
Great. As you all are probably aware, the Councilor Lally's predecessor, State Representative Michelle Dubois, she would always say that Ward 6 had the highest growth of single-family homes in the city. So how would you particularly encourage that momentum and maintain it, especially as we go through different kind of, you know, difficult fiscal times, federally, statewide, municipal, locally? How would you maintain and encourage people to come into Ward 6, buy single-family homes and stay?
That would be John first.
Okay, I think to encourage people to come in, and especially younger families, I think we have to have a good business base first, and I don't think the city has done enough to look into abandoning the vacant properties to develop businesses, either even for multi-use purposes, for commercial, for retail. And at the end of my street, okay, I lived down the village and I have my entire life, there's a huge factory complex, and there are some small businesses in there right now, but I'm wondering whether at some point that privately-owned complex, the owner would be willing to sell, sell to the city at a good price, and we can develop that land. That's the Spock Street area. I think you're, you're familiar with it, okay? And that's the old Brockton Soul and Plastics building. There are some small businesses in there now, but there is also other abandoned lots on Spock Street that we can develop businesses.
Okay, Jack would be next.
All right. I like the question. Ward 6 is currently 95% single-family homes. It's a trend that leads to a lot of fantastic neighborhoods, quiet areas, you know, you can let your kid out, and you don't really have to worry, you know, you'll know he'll be with the neighborhood and with the other children. In terms of abandoned buildings, one thing, or one, one tool that, that we have as counselors is we're able to really follow up with those buildings. We can't make people act on them, but I've personally, you know, worked with the Board of Health and the building inspectors to, you know, follow up, to find out who the actual owner is, to pressure them to take action on their properties. In terms of the city actually foreclosing on the property, that is a very long, very, very long, painful process. It takes a long time for the city to actually take the property, and then there's a one-year right of redemption, where even if you're remotely connected to the owner of the property, you have a full year to come in and pay off the debts on the property, and the property is yours. So even after the city forecloses on something, they have to wait a year. They can't, they can't just let it go. But we do have, you know, things in place that I would like to see stepped up.
Okay, thank you, and Joanne?
So I think people come, whenever people consider moving into a new home, they're looking at, if they have children, they're looking at the quality of the schools. That's obviously important, something we need to maintain in Brockton. They're looking at the beauty of the surrounding area, so we need code enforcement to make sure that there aren't illegal cars on people's driveways. We need to look at owners of apartment buildings who don't keep those apartment buildings to the standards that they should, and what we can do about that. I think those sorts of things are the things that families look for, as well as the parks, too. Like, people want places where they can go out, dog park, children's park, basketball court. I think those are all important.
Okay. Shayna and I are smiling at each other because we have a private joke about a dog park, but we'll, we'll tell you that another time.
It's very private.
Okay, here we go. So, thank you. We'll go to Steve with the next question.
Now that marijuana's been somewhat legalized, or basically legalized, would you favor drug testing for elected officials and department heads? And do any of you smoke marijuana or use drugs?
Interesting. Okay, we'll go to Jack first.
Well, I think it's still illegal for me. I do not smoke marijuana. If, if anyone wants, wants to drug test me, see if I'm lying, they're welcome to try. No, I would be, I'd be fine with it. If somebody came up and they, they wanted to drug test elected officials, they wanted to drug test anyone currently involved in the government, that's fine by me. You're not going to get an objection from me. The only difficulty might be trying to work it into union contracts, but otherwise, no, no complaints here.
Okay, so next would be John.
Steve, I don't use any drugs, okay? Any controlled substances of any kind, okay? I do, I do enjoy a cocktail once in a while, okay? But to answer your question about drug testing elected officials, and definitely, I'm definitely in favor of that, okay? Why, you know, why in the private industry do we drug test and run queries on people when we can't do that for elected officials? I would definitely be in favor of that.
Okay, and Joanne?
I'd have to disagree with both my opponents. I believe that drug testing is an assault to my personal liberty. That's probably a little bit extreme for somebody who is more of a moderate. I do not take any drugs, I do not smoke marijuana, but I do believe as long as you're performing your job and you're behaving in a professional manner, and there's no reason for somebody's integrity to be questioned or their activities outside of work, then I believe it's a, it's a private issue.
Would you, would that go for alcohol as well?
If you, if it's social drinking that's not interfering with your work, that should totally be reasonable. If it's interfering with your work and there's a question about alcoholism, then I believe it's, yeah, then that's a totally separate issue.
Do either of you want to weigh in on the second part of Steve's question? No? Okay, so we will go over to Shayna's next question.
No, I actually have a question for you. So I have one particular question for each of them. Could I do that instead of asking one question for all three?
Um...
No?
Haven't done that before.
I'm here to shake it up.
What about, do you folks object to that?
I have no objection.
Okay, then we'll do it.
Okay. Do you want to call the, who's first?
First would be Joanne.
Okay, so, Joanne, in your literature, you say it's time for action. That's your slogan. So what inaction are you referring to of the current counselor?
So I'm not referring to a specific inaction, I'm saying that I think there's more we can be doing. For example, we are currently looking at turning private roads into public ways. I believe that we can look at some of the other cities that have looked at streamlining that process to make it quicker and easier to do streets in bulk as opposed to one-on-one on one. I think that we can do more as well to build collaboration between the departments so that we can get stuff done in Ward 6, like the parks and playgrounds. It's been, like I said, I've lived in Ward 6 over 30 years, and only now the park's getting improvements. So it's not a specific inaction on Jack's part, but I believe we can be doing more and we can be doing better than we currently are.
I'll let you respond.
I just wanted to touch upon the private way thing, because I know, you know, I've been talking about it, people have been talking about it. Ward 6 currently has around 72 private ways, a little more, a couple streets more. The reason they're not done in bulk is partial, is basically financial. In order to become a public way, there needs to be an accepted street plan on file. Many of these streets do not have an accepted street plan. The engineering department only has the money to pay for one or two surveys, and that's citywide, throughout the year. So I'm currently working, Wentworth has a land surveying program that we're working on it, but that's, that's the financial concern. It's, we're doing as many as we can.
John, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, by, by far, going door-to-door in Ward 6, and I've knocked on over 1,000 doors so far, the number one priority has been the roads, the infrastructure, the condition of the roads, and to a lesser, lesser degree, poor street lighting. So, you know, Jack said, and, and I get it, I understand, each counselor, each ward counselor has only allocated a certain amount of streets or linear footage per year, per ward, but if those, if those, if those issues of streets not being accepted by the city are true, then I think it is the sitting counselor's job, and it may take years, but we need to start moving that, that, that process forward, okay? And that's part of my progress plan. You need to, you need to, you need to find out what it takes to, to make those streets recognized, and those folks are paying property taxes also, so they deserve the services.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on, the next question is for Jack.
Okay. Counselor, your literature says to make a better Brockton, and how have you made Brockton better in your first term?
Well, a couple different ways. You know, I've returned every call that, you know, people have placed to me. I've worked with everyone who reaches out. I know the City Council has, you know, voted to approve the money, and it's, it's happening slowly, you'll see it. I know on North Quincy Street, we've brought in LED lights to help, you know, replace the streetlights and to help address the, the lighting concerns. And I've worked, you know, really as, as best, as best as possible to address a lot of these problems. You know, as I said in my opening, some of our biggest concerns are infrastructure, public safety, and fiscal responsibility. The more roads we make public, the more mileage of public ways the city has, the more money we get from the state and federal government to pave roads. You know, we've done things like we've, I've gotten the money Brophy and Phillips, working on the Woodland Park development off of North Quincy Street. They promised money for a playground 16 years ago. We got them to pay for it, and I hand these out to everyone I see, and don't hesitate to call me if you have any questions.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Drazinski, you mentioned in your opening statement that you need, we need better, that Ward 6 needs better representation. What has your, or what has Councilor Lally been lacking in his representation of the people to and on the council thus far?
Well, one problem, okay, just to...
Well, one problem, okay, just to negate what he just said about returning every phone call, I've talked to several people where they have reached out to the councillor and he has either not returned phone calls or has taken a long time to return them. One specific example is up on Sully Road in Brookfield, there was an illegal asphalt operation going on, and I guess several residents, according to what I've heard, called the councillor. I don't know whether he returned the phone calls or not in that case, but nothing, nothing got done as far as that illegal asphalt operation out of a private residence. And finally, councillor Lodge, Winfarrow stepped in, and, you know, within a week, the operation ceased, so.
Jack, I'm going to give you a chance to respond to that.
Thank you. Only one call was placed during that entire interaction, and that was me calling one of those neighbors. I did not receive any calls about that. A lot of the work was done through email. Things take a long time, especially when it comes to businesses operating inside of a residential home, which I'm sure, I'm sure you know, councillor. So I got the ball rolling on that, and we got that started a long time before anything even, anything even took effect. I know, I know what you're talking about, I know the area you're talking about, for the same reasons that they require a lot of evidence before they shut that down. You know, the same reason they require that is the same reason they're not kicking your door down and busting you for an asphalt development company.
I don't have one.
Well, that's good to know. Otherwise, I'd have to call code enforcement. Yeah, no, it's, it's, it took a while, and it started going. And the call, councillor Farwell, of course, is very, very strong on code enforcement, was a big help, but the timing, I would say, was more coincidental.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
I'm just going to let Joanne add if she wants to address that issue at all.
Nope, I'm okay.
Okay, so we're going to go to Steve.
Okay, this isn't so much of a Ward Six issue as it is an issue right here where we are now, in downtown Brockton. Brockton has a homeless problem, and the shelters and centers for the homeless that we have now don't address the problem because most of the homeless people are addicted to either drugs or alcohol, and you have to be sober to get into these shelters and these programs that we have, the different overnight housing. You have to be sober to get in. They don't want to sober up, so they don't get in, so they sleep outside. As a councillor, what, what can you do to cure this problem? This is, this is, this makes the city of Brockton really look like a second-rate city. What can you do to cure it?
Would be John first.
Well, Steve, I think, I think you have to reach out to whatever agencies, whatever services that are out there to, to address the addiction problems. I don't know, I think this, I think this city should take a partnership with these agencies and help these people out. I mean, if you're addicted to substances, everyone knows, it's like, you know, I've never had the experience in my own family, but I've seen people try to quit smoking, for example, and it's, it's really tough. You can't walk away from it. So, you know, you have to get these professionals involved with the addicts, the homeless addicts, and perhaps that would help cure the problem.
Okay, next would be Joanne.
It's definitely a huge problem. I was at the Montello Business Association meeting a couple nights ago, and it was the issue that businesses were talking about. And some of them are, have gotten to the point where they're considering leaving, and that's the last thing that we want to see happen. I think that John is right, we need to do more to collaborate with the nonprofit organizations and the churches and others who can help us with this. I also think we need to work better at a state level to bring in community coordination, because a lot of these homeless people are not always from Brockton, they're from outside communities as well. I think we can do a little bit more with outreach to raise awareness among the homeless of what their actual options are. I know sometimes they might be aware of one place that they may go, but they'll say, oh, well, there's never any beds there, so there's no chance I'll get in there. There are other places they can go as well, potentially. So I think we need to coordinate and collaborate better on the issue, and definitely prioritize it if we want to keep businesses in Montello and the city.
Thank you. And Jack?
Right off the bat, upwards of fifty percent of all drug crime committed in the city of Brockton, you know, all arrests made, upwards of fifty percent of people arrested are not from Brockton. Brockton is used as a center point. I mean, you know, you, your dealer's in Stoughton and you're in Abington, what, you know, where else are you going to go? You're going to meet right in the middle. The city has a program called the Champion Plan. If you need help, if you have an addiction and you've reached the point where, you know, you want, you want to fight this, you need help, you can go to the police station, and you know, you say you're here for the Champion Plan. Brewster Ambulance will take you to a facility, and a volunteer will sit with you until the city and the volunteer agencies that we work with find you a bed in a treatment facility. More needs to be done about the drug addiction and homelessness, and, you know, we're searching every avenue for help.
All the answers that the three of you just gave all assume that the people want help. I'm going on the assumption that they don't want help. They don't, they like doing the drugs, they want to keep doing the drugs, they like being drunk, they want to keep being drunk. But they're still out there, and they're still sleeping on the streets. What can we do to people who will not accept treatment?
Okay, we've, got to be careful with time. Thirty seconds each. John first.
That's a real tough question, Steve, you know? You know, at that point, I think you'd have to get law enforcement involved to, to move these people along. You know, addiction is a tough thing. An addict would, the steps an addict would have to take would be, he or she would have to, would have to admit they have a problem first. And if they don't admit they have that problem, then you're sort of at a dead end, your options are really limited as far as getting the people off the street.
Okay, Joanne?
Definitely a tough issue. I think law enforcement does have to play a role in keeping these people moving along, but I think we can also make it less hospitable for them to remain where they are. A lot of them, for example, by Park Street, under the bridge, sleep there because it's, nobody goes there, there's no pedestrians, it's quiet, it's dark, the lighting is bad, the street's not great. If we improve that, there'll be more traffic, there'll be more people, they might want to find someplace better and quieter for themselves.
Jack?
I agree that, you know, we need to at least, you know, keep people moving. The, you know, the area around North Main Street where Father Bill's is, is a mess. You know, you take somebody down there, they're not going to want to come back to the city. We've reached, for the first time in a while, two hundred officers in the Brockton Police Department. The district attorney has moved his office, and we've got additional twenty-five state police officers. We need to keep up the pressure, walking beats, community policing, and clean up the street.
Time, I can't, no, I can't. We've got to do closing statements.
I have a question, I just wanted to share with them one more thing about that homelessness.
I need the time for the, I'm sorry. So just real quick, reminding everybody that there is another candidate's forum that's going to happen Monday night, September eleventh, at the Ashfield School with these three candidates. I will be the moderator, that will be with people in the audience. Okay, I got closing statements to do, so we can do the forty-five minutes. So the way it was, the way it was drawn was John was first, and you have up to, up to two.
Okay, thank you. Once again, my name is John Druzynskis, and I'm running for the Ward Six City Council seat. I think, first of all, I want to say that it's very important that you vote in the parliamentary election September nineteenth. A lot of people don't think a primary or preliminary election is very important, but it is in this case. As you can see, there's three candidates here, and the top two go on to November seventh. So I think my, my background with, with life experience and with volunteerism in the community and the many volunteer groups in civic and community and church groups that I belong to play into, into being a good councillor. I just consider the councillor's job as an extension of my volunteerism. So I respectfully ask for your vote on September nineteenth and hopefully on November seventh. Thank you very much, Mark, and thank you Shayna and Steve.
Okay, and number two is Jack.
Well, I, you know, I want to thank everyone again for the support I've received so far, both at the door and at the ballot box before. You know, my phone number, I'm always accessible as a councillor. My promise when I ran in 2015, and a promise I'm keeping till, you know, through today, is I will call everyone back within twenty-four hours. My phone number is (508) 410-0330. My Facebook is Jack Lally. Please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions, comments, or concerns. I've considered it, you know, a real honor, serving as the councillor for Ward Six. I feel we've, you know, made good progress, we've achieved a lot, we've paved, you know, quite a few, usually councillors get one road a year paved. We're on pace to do four in two years. I've also been endorsed by the Brockton Firefighters Local 144. If anyone has any questions, you know, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you for your support, and I hope to have your vote.
Thanks, Jack, and Joanne?
Hello, everyone. My name is Joanne Zigman, again, running for Ward Six City Council. I respectfully ask for your vote on September nineteen, because I feel we can do better in Brockton. I have over ten years of nonprofit and business development experience. When people say things to me like, oh, it takes a long time, or, well, the process is complicated, that's just not good enough for me. Maybe I have high expectations. But I really think that we can do better in terms of where the money's going in the city, we can do better at letting people know what's happening in the city, and we can do better being the kind of community I think that we all want to be, where families can stay in the neighborhoods for a long time and have their kids grow up and even take their homes. I do have a website, it's joannforbrockton.com, that's J-O-A-N-N-E-forbrockton.com. And you can also reach me anytime on (508) 521-9891. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions, and I just want to thank everybody for hosting and moderating this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. John? Real quick.
It's going to be quick, I forgot to give my contact information.
Do it.
Okay. My phone number is area code (508) 586-8599. If email is more convenient, it's johnd27@verizon.net. I do have a Facebook page. My website is, is under construction right now, I'm revising it and updating it.
Okay. And you didn't use all your time, so that's just fine. Shayna, I have like a couple of seconds, if you wanted to say what you...
Oh, yeah, it's just a statement, just about the homelessness. It's just, it seemed like a lot of the correlation was homelessness and addiction or drugs, but also a lot of people are homeless due to mental health issues. So I just wanted to put that out there, as you all develop your plan and attack this issue, think about that as well.
Okay, and I have less than a minute, so I just want to thank all the three candidates in Ward Six. Ward Six continues to have the tradition from the last election of being very civil, and I look forward to seeing the three of you on Monday night, and we'll also be there to record that as well. So thank you for participating, and thank you all for putting your name on the ballot. You're watching Brockton Community Access. Stay tuned for more debates. We have the Ward Three debate, the Ward Four debate for council in the preliminary, and then we will go on to the general election. Do not have a city councillor-at-large preliminary. We will do that, this time it's eight, less than sixteen in the studio, so it'll be a lot more fun. And then we'll have candidates for mayor as well. So stay tuned for Brockton Community Access, channels nine, twelve, and ninety-eight. And thank you to my two panelists. Have a good evening.